United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm not going to do it again. I'm going to note for the record that everybody's here. Councilmember Gillespie is here via telephone. And we'll move into presentations. Proclamation. Proclamation for proclaim New Hope Community Day on October 26, 2025, discussion LA. Who's got that? I thought I saw Gussie somewhere around here. You gonna say something, Gussie? It's not like you not to say something. I do have a proclamation here I can read.
I know, but we have a pastor and a pastor.
Pastor Youngs here too, though.
Bring them to the pastor Harvey Young Jr. and his wife, Lady Michelle, and also the bishop of the state of Arizona, Harvey Terrell Young Senior and his lovely wife, Lady Madeline Young. They're all here, so.
Oh, good.
Any of you like to have a word? Because I, 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 I was, when Pastor Young first came to Arizona, I was fellowship with him. I'm currently a member of the New Hope Community Church, which I love my pastor, my first lady, and members that fellowship, that worship there.
Okay, let's bring the two Pastor Youngs up and let me read this. You ready?
Yes, sir.
I haven't seen you in a while.
It's been a minute.
I know, I'm not going to say anything. No, no, it hasn't been a year. I saw my New Hope giving away food the other day.
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is a proclamation. Whereas New Hope Community Church of God and Christ founded April 1995, and its members accepted the call to Christian education and ministry and reaching the lost by any available means in the Coolidge and surrounding areas, and whereas New Hope Community Church of God and Christ is committed to spreading the message of hope, love, faith through relationship with God and fellowship with believers, touching lives across multicultural and socioeconomic communities by building a bridge of hope in the community, and whereas New Hope Community has shown demonstration of God's love through community outreach, effective children's ministry programs, and providing missions programs for families in need, and whereas today we commemorate the 30th church anniversary, the founding of leadership of Bishop Harvey T. Young Senior, and we thank him for 30 years of service to the new community church, and we celebrate Pastor Harvey T. Young Jr. for continuing the legacy of hope and faith in the Coolidge community, and whereas the city of Coolidge looks forward to a continued relationship of community development, service, and outreach to the citizens of our city, now I therefore, John Thompson, Mayor of the city of Coolidge, Arizona, do hereby proclaim New Hope Community Day on October 26, 2025, and encourage every citizen to celebrate the 30th anniversary of Bishop Young Sr. and the New Hope Community Church. Congratulations.
Mayor. Also like to add, I know the city of Coolidge should be celebrating their 100th year. Well, this past week, the Arizona jurisdiction of the Churches of God in Christ celebrated their 100th year with the Church of God in Christ.
Well, congratulations.
Good job.
All getting old.
Good evening, Mayor Thompson. To all of the men, councilwomen, we thank you for the recognition that you've given to us. Our church has been here for 30 years, and to God be the glory. There's a young lady by the name of Sverta Livingston. She is 102. She is also still a member of our church, and she wanted for her birthday this year for us to be able to collect common toiletry items so we could bless those that don't have those common everyday things, and we were able to collect over 1,000 items to serve as this community, the men and the women that may be less fortunate than we. So we thank God for having a heart to serve and for you all and your partnership with our church, because we see you all on Community Day. Y'all come through and, Mayor, you'll take pictures with us and you'll shake hands and everything, and we just thank you for having a servant's heart, and we appreciate everything that the city of Coolidge has done for our church. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
To my lovely wife, because she always got her head spinning and thinking about the next idea that we can come up with, and to our church, we have an awesome church, a great church family, and we just thank God for them.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're grateful to be here. Thirty years ago, I came here, and the only thing I got was you cannot build a church here. I said, who said I couldn't? The Lord said, build, and we're going to build. Tom Shope was the mayor, and he did what all he could to help. People would come to me, especially those who are active in drugs. That used to be a drug drop-off, right where this church is at. And we just freed and freed the demons and devils out, and now we got a church there. And I done got this old. Tom wasn't that as gray as he is now. And I'm grateful for all the ones I know and the mayor. I've been knowing him quite a while now, but we're grateful that we are celebrating such a time now. My son is here. I'm going to go to Mary Copha and build another church. I know I done got old, but he didn't say to stop doing when you get old, was to work until your day is done. I'm going to say this because this might help somebody. A month and a half ago, a little more, I had a triple bypass open-heart surgery. And I'm so grateful. My wife stuck with me, my son, and all of my children. They've been hanging with me and keeping me going. I've been cut from here to down here, but thanks be unto God, I'm still here. And I want you all, that so many is younger than I am, way younger, I want you to continue to do what God have instructed you to do so we can make Coolidge a better place. God bless you. I love you all.
Thank you, sir. God bless you. Okay. Moving to presentation, item four, discuss potential park improvements presented by Community Services Director Ricky Lapagian.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Happy to be here tonight. Not so much a presentation, but a discussion. When you guys approved the budget, we had $150,000 approved to replace a play structure at Main Street Park. Why I'm here tonight with a couple of these photos is to ask to go out for a request for proposal, not to replace the playground this year, which is still within national safety standards and a solid structure, albeit a little bit older, but to maybe spread that money around, redo some basketball courts and replace swing sets, Walker Park, San Carlos Park, North Park, Palaverdi Park, and possibly Main Street. I've got some preliminary numbers, so if we can get all those done, we will. The RFP, if approved, if you guys approve me going out, would be pretty detailed and prices split up so we could see even if we couldn't do all five, maybe we could do four. And that would then again come back before you guys for your approval at that point. I just feel like, given that the structure's still in good shape, that our money would go further and make a bigger difference in the community if we could spread it throughout a few different parks rather than just placing that one, replacing that one structure this year. So I'm here to ask if I can go out for a request for proposal, to get proposals for those parks and redoing those basketball surfaces as well as the basketball goals and replacing some swing sets in as many parks as that $150,000 can get us. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ricky, we've had conversations too, kind of about bringing North Park back to life because we need more fields.
Right.
And so I know there's been some progress made on getting some light.
Right, so at the next meeting, you'll have a proposal in front of you for some lights at North Park as well. That'll be coming at our very next meeting.
Okay, because yeah, I talked to some of the people over in your department. They said, we're going to have so many soccer teams, we're not going to know what to do with them.
Yeah, I mean, we're two weeks away from registration closing for soccer, and we're busting at the seams, so it's a good problem to have, you know?
But that's, you know, it kind of goes hand in hand with some of this. We probably need to, you know, upgrade some of this stuff, but I see North Park's on there, and it looks pretty good. I was by it last Thursday, and it looks pretty good, so.
Yeah, it's coming around, and I would like to resurface the basketball court and get new basketball goals there as well as if we get the lights, the lights would not only cover that softball field, baseball field that's there, but the basketball courts as well, and serve as some security lighting overnight.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
No?
Right here, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Tom.
Rick, it seems to me like when this first came to us, maybe when this first came out, that you were going to do one part, Main Street Park. Is that right?
Um, so what was put in the budget was $150,000 to place, to replace the playground structure that's under the shade at Main Street Park. So it's a rather large playground, and it would take that much money to put something in its place. But after some reflection within our department, and on a side note, what got me thinking about it was one of my three daughters were like, you can't, you can't replace the alligator park. That's what they call it, because the slide's supposed to look like an alligator. And I told them I'm going to have to replace it eventually, no matter what. But I feel like we can help out three, four, maybe five parks rather than just that one playground structure this year would be more beneficial to the citizens than, than just the one structure.
I agree with you. Thank you.
I just got a couple of comments. Do we have a list of all the different, of the different amenities that are available at the different parks?
Yeah.
Okay, and do all of them have water and do all of them have electricity available?
Not all parks have water and electricity, no.
Okay, and do they all have covered areas for the playground or, or a covered area for picnic or picnic tables or things like that?
I believe every park, not every park, no, even East Park has a Ramada over the playground or a shade structure over the playground. Not, not everyone has a Ramada and a shade over the structure, but on our website, we list all the parks and every amenity that's in, in those parks.
Okay, because what I'm getting at is I think it would probably be best if we tried to, you know, have all the, you know, all the same amenities available at the park, considering there's enough, you know, enough area and everything, because I know we have one really small park.
Right.
But, and then also, you know, if we have, if we have a ball field there and a, and a backstop that they're, you know, repaired and they're in operable condition.
Right, and I don't disagree with you, and I know of one backstop at East Park that we were waiting on the bucket truck to be fixed, which is now fixed, that we can go up and repair that, that bar at the top that's collapsed.
Right, because, and, and just, I mean, if we just did, went ahead and took each park and did an assessment on each one of them, which ones needed what, and then also take a look at, you know, what, what's priority, because if you have something that's falling down or, you know, playground equipment that's not safe, of course, you know, that's the stuff we want to get done first, but, you know, get a list of all the parks, what needs to be done, and then prioritize the lists.
Yeah, well, internally, we do have that list. I'd be happy to share it with you if you'd like it.
Yeah, if you would share with council, that would be great.
Absolutely. Me and Gilbert have had those discussions, and I've sent him that list, but I will definitely update it and forward it to all of you guys.
Okay, thank you.
And be happy to, any comments back, it's the way I, you know, if you don't see eye to eye with how we prioritize them, if you think something else is a priority, I'm happy to, to entertain those discussions.
God, anybody else? All right, there's something else. Thank you, Ricky.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into public hearings. Item five, receive public comments on a conditional use permit application request by Declan Murphy of Anamath in conjunction with Coal Creek Consulting on behalf of Verizon Wireless, C3 General Service Zoning District location under Article 14A through G to allow for a 65-foot wireless communication facilities, a WCF, on a 9.19 acre site that is located just west of the southwest intersection corner of East Hauser Road and the Union Pacific Railroad right of way, APN number 40171-004-ADAM-414452-SH Highway 87. This is a public hearing. James?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Another wireless communication facility coming to Coolidge, you know, it'll help out to coverage. This is a Verizon facility located, you know, where you, you know, where that, kind of the backside of that roping arena area is. It'll more resemble like a light pole, a power pole. It's not camouflaged in any way, it's just kind of a regular Verizon facility. And we have received no comments, no public concerns or, you know, there, as you can see, some of the screening they'll provide, plenty of access for fire and emergency crews. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
One right here. Mr. Mayor, what's, how does that compare to, I know it's way out south town, but where, how does that compare to the other sites? Verizon has a few in town, or one or two in town anyway.
It, it just, it looks just like the ones we have in town around, you know, exactly like them.
Same area, certain square.
Little, little better screening, little better walls, not as tall.
All right, thanks.
Anybody else? Anybody from the public? It's public hearing. All right, see, nobody rush, rush up. We'll move out of this one and move into the next public hearing, item six, to receive public comments on CoolPZ 2606-11 Growers Market rezoning ag to I-1, a rezoning application request for approximately 29.05 acres of land located about one quarter of a mile east of the southeast intersection corner of South Highway 87 and East Randolph Road from the agricultural ag zoning district to a garden industrial I-1 zoning district as submitted by Rick Miller of Land Two Plan LLC on behalf of Neil and Felice Brooks with Growers Market, Inc., APN number 40121-079C. This is a public hearing. James?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Yeah, this public hearing is, is for Mr. Brooks. They have about 20 and almost 30 acres out in the, basically in the industrial area. They have Stinger around them, refinery there. We have, you know, the railroad tracks, you know, run right by there. So it fits the location, it fits our general plan. You know, currently it's zoned ag, his operation, how he wants to run it, it's, it's not allowed in the ag zones, so more appropriate zoning be the I-1, or even more of a nursery, you know, commercial type nursery, wholesale nursery with some composting that, that, you know, complements the, the, the business. And I think, I think, do you want to present? Okay, Mr. Miller has a presentation if you guys bear with the setting it up here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rick Miller, Land to Plan LLC, Brenda Drive, Casa Grande. Little presentation for you tonight. Wanted to kind of share a little more detail on this application for each of you, kind of have a, a good understanding of what's being requested by Mr. Neil Brooks, who's in the audience tonight, along with his legal counsel, Mr. Tim Lasorda. Again, the application has been presented as to rezone from ag, agriculture, to garden industrial I-1. Kind of go through a little step-by-step course zoning defined, the classification of land according to restrictions placed on its use and development. Two key words there in this, land use. When you talk about zoning, you're talking about land use. Arizona Revised Statute Title 9-4621 grants municipalities the authority to adopt zoning ordinances that regulate land use. In the zoning provisions of the Arizona Revised Statute, there's a, it talks about consistency, very key word here. Zoning proposals must be consistent with the overall general plan for the area. Growers Market's request before you is the approval of a rezoning from ag to garden industrial zone, which is consistent with the City of Coolidge general plan that was approved by city council and the city's registered voters. This is the general plan land use policy figure in the 2035 general plan that the council. There's several areas on this map that are illustrated in purple. Those areas are for industrial slash manufacturing uses. You can see on the very south end where we have the inland port where Nicola Motor and Procter and Gamble and those other activities are in that general area. We have, of course, a lot of industrial land about, around the ever-growing and, and ever-popular airport industrial park area. There's a swath of industrial that runs along the Union Pacific Railroad tracks in the middle of this planning area, and then there's a few other isolated areas of industrial slash manufacturing, some of it over there by our wastewater treatment plant, another area up there north of Highway 87, just north of the Walmart. This is the, a little more, a closer look at the site that's being proposed for this evening's rezoning request. You can see it's right there to the east of the Union Pacific Railroad, north of Randolph Road. As James mentioned, a little about 29 acres in that area. You can see on this map, it is designated on the general as industrial slash manufacturing. The east boundary of this property is the Christiansen Road alignment. Initially, there was some confusion on whether this was industrial or whether it was ag. It's definitely industrial in the land use plan because it lies west of the Christiansen Road alignment. The applicant is requesting council approval of the zone change from ag to garden industrial consistent with the adopted land use element of the 2035 plan, and the land use element right out of the general plan, the land use element establishes a blueprint to guide development in the direction that gives focus to the vision that the city hopes to create through zoning and land use regulations. That's a citation right out of the plan. What's the best use for this site? We looked at all these uses, agricultural, you know, it's currently zoned ag, it hasn't been farmed in some time. That's a very, it's a smaller site. I'll show you some of the adjacent uses that would make it very difficult to farm. This applicant purchased this land from the adjoining property owner who does farm the land, Mr. Freeman. There are irrigation rights, but they're very complicated. I learned tonight that there may be some irrigation rights for this property, but they're very complex, and through an agreement that was negotiated between the buyer and Mr. Freeman. Residential on this property, absolutely not appropriate. You know, if you look at the surrounding uses, and I'll show you in a minute, the surrounding uses are not compatible with residential dwelling. Commercial, no. The site is an industrial corridor, not suitable for retail uses, where you'd have a lot of traffic coming to and from the place. So you wouldn't see any retail, you wouldn't see any, you know, like, not likely you'd see any restaurants or anything like that in this general area, and you'll see more of why, as I illustrate some of the pictures for you. Industrial, yes. This is the only appropriate use for the site as envisioned by the vision in the 2035 general plan. In the general plan, there's also a description of agricultural land use. 19% of the planning area boundary is designated as agriculture in the town's planning area boundary. If you look at the general plan, they talk about agricultural land use, which this property is currently zoned. There's a lot of descriptions about land use form and design within the agriculture zone, and I've highlighted something here I think is especially important. Agricultural activities that may at times impact air quality levels through the generation of dust, aerial spraying that are common practices in agricultural operations and are likely to cause noise and odors, and odors from dairy, feedlot, and grazing operations. These are activities that are allowed in about 19 of the overall general plan, planning area boundary. Ag does produce some negative aspects for abutting property owners. Existing land use and surrounding the site, I wanted to kind of show these pictures for you. Looking to the north, the land immediately north of the applicant's site is farmed currently, but it's also designated in the land use plan as industrial and manufacturing along the railroad. This is the land immediately to the east of the site. This is the Freeman property. You know, there was a home on this. Unfortunately, the home was destroyed by a horrific gas line explosion that occurred south of this home, you know, several years ago, and this is the property that's looking immediately, that's immediately to the east, and took this picture right off of Randolph Road. This is another picture in the immediate area. I'm on the property. This is an adjacent pond that is actually part of the compressor station property where the El Paso Natural Gas Compressor Station is located. This is the property immediately to the west. If you go across the railroad tracks, there's a little patch of farmland, and then you have Stinger Bridge and Iron. I'm not sure what they're erecting on this property, but they, they have some activity going on this land, which is also on the land use plan designated for industrial and manufacturing. If you look to the south of the site, immediately to the south, you have the Western Emulsions facility. You can see in the distance, you've got some of the structures that are related to the SRP, gas generating station. This is a site that actually looks from the railroad tracks right there on Randolph, at the compressor station, which is immediately to the west of the client's property. This is some of the surrounding areas are pictures in this, in the immediate area. This is a salvage operation right along Highway 87 near the Randolph community. I saw that, you saw that slide already. This is a side, a slide looking immediately north along the railroad tracks. The compressor station is on the east side of the tracks, and my client's property wraps around the compressor station. This is along the eastern boundary of the property, looking straight north along the Christiansen Road alignment. Mr. Freeman's farm is to the east of this canal, and to the west is the, the property that we're requesting rezoning to light industrial. On-site pictures, the client is currently operating a plant nursery, growing some trees, plants. You can see some other things here. They do have some piles that they were composting. This is primarily wood, wood shred, shredded wood material. They can shred that up and make excellent compost for the material that they want to grow on the site and plant. These are some more pictures onsite of the, the pots that they're growing different plants in to sell to the wholesale market. Trees are in the background. A little pile back here is a mulch pile on the back on the top left of the picture. They do have mulch piles on the property. They have generated some mulch to help with the fertile, you know, the soil and growing these products. Some other examples of the mulch in the area right behind the potted plants. This is a picture looking right off of Randolph Road across the prop, actually, I'm, I'm sorry. Now, this is looking across the property from Randolph Road. Got some wood piled up along Randolph Road front. Got some wood piled up along Randolph Road frontage. In the back, they had brought in some gypsum material. A lot of that's been removed from the site. They were shredding and grinding up gypsum as a compost material, which is something that the farmers in the area really like to have. This is an example of one of the mulch piles that was shredded up gypsum board. A lot of this has been removed from the site. They still have some there, but they, this is a very favorable composting material that the farmers especially like as a soil additive for the farms in the area. Again, trees that are potted on the site, a couple mulch piles here, very organic. One time, they did have some material that was onsite that had some food waste in it and other waste that generated some odors. I believe that most of that material has been taken off the site, leaving some of the more rich, organic material here on the property. Again, some of the other areas, you can see, so a lot of this site has been cleaned up significantly since the first time I went out there, several, a couple months ago. Next steps, the issue tonight is really to look at whether or not this property is suitable for light industrial. Regardless of the operation that's on the property, is this site, at its location, an appropriate location for a light manu, light industrial activity? If the approval is granted this evening, there are other steps that have to take place. According to the local zoning code, a site plan application must be submitted to the Development Services Department for consideration by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The applicant's request tonight is not a request for site plan approval. Nothing in the application before you is related to the site plan request. You're considering only the applicant's request for a rezoning from agriculture to I-1 garden industrial. If this zoning classification meets, and whether or not this zoning classification meets the consistency requirement referenced in Title 9 of the state statute, which it does. In summary, ARS Title 9 mandates that the municipal actions, including zoning, must be consistent with the municipality's general plan. The general plan is the foundation for local growth and development policies, and its various elements, including land use, transportation, open space, et cetera, are intended to guide future decisions like the decision being made this evening. Any new ordinance must align with the goals and objectives of the adopted general plan. Ordinance number 2508 aligns with the 2035 general plan. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
I have a question. So he already has a gardening business out there, but what is it zoned for now?
It's zoned ag currently.
But you can, so he's just growing things? He's not selling things?
He's growing plant material out there. He's been doing some composting on the property, but he is growing plant material on the property. He's a wholesale plant nursery. When he purchased this property from the adjacent landowner for the intended use, he believed that the, the plant nurseries growing things on the property would be a permitted. He found out later that it's not. He got a cease and desist order from the City of Coolidge. He retained me to come in and try to rezone this property consistent with a general plan for light manufacturing, which does allow for plant nurseries, which is what he really wants to do. He has the capacity certainly to do a lot of improvements on this site. He's made some improvements in the recent months after the cease and desist order. He's taken a lot of the material off the site. He'll continue to do that. But really, that's not the question this evening. It's really, is this site appropriately located for light industrial activity? The site plan process that they would have to go through later, should the council approve the rezoning, will address issues like screening setbacks.
I'm just asking if he's selling things from the property now? It just sounded like that was happening.
He's not, it's not been farmed. No, it's not been farmed. They are growing plants and pots.
Jesus Christ. Rick, how long have you been doing this?
I think he's been doing this probably six months or so. How, when did you buy the property out there, Mr. Brooks? Started in January.
January? And he had, he went to the city, got a business license and everything?
Actually, when he bought this property, he went to county to address, ask the county. I was working with quality and the county environmental group, and they suggested that he was in the county at the time he was visiting with them. That's why he started going on with this. Then he had an unfortunate compost combustion. They had shredded up Levi jeans out there that combusted. The fire department came out there, put that fire out. It was when he was in the hospital with a heart attack. He'd just had a heart attack. His son was operating. The fire was quickly put out, and that's when he learned that it was not in the, in the, the city of Coolidge. And he asked for an address. They said it's in the city. You got to get the right zoning. You got to cease and desist letter from the city. And, and right now, he's going through the process to bring himself into compliance with the city's.
So he thought he was in the county when he opened the business up?
Yes.
And so evidently, you don't talk to anybody about the compost that he's doing, about the fire protection, stuff like that, is that correct?
Well, county and the state allow composting as an agricultural use. I mean, if it was in the county, he could do all the composting he wants on this property as a, as a permitted.
So he thought that little square little area was only island evidently he must have thought it was?
Uh, no, it's not an island.
No, I know it's not. I'm saying, but he must have assumed that.
Yeah, I think, I think he was told through the county officials that he thought it was in the county, based on the conversations he had with the county.
And since he got that order to cease and desist, he has not been performing any work out there, is that correct?
Since he, well, he, since he's got the cease and desist order, he's been removing probably sixty to eighty percent of the material that was on the site. He's been cleaning it up, taking a lot of the material, the compost material, off the site. It's much cleaner today than it was.
And since he, he found out that it is a city, he has gone down and got a business license and.
I don't think he's got a business license yet because the zoning, he's got, he doesn't have a site plan yet. He's still got to this process in order to get, I don't think the city's going to grant, maybe Gilbert can address that. I don't think the city will grant a, a business license unless he has proper zoning to conduct a plant nursery on this property. That's why he's here this evening.
And has he done this before? Has he, how long has he been doing this?
I'll let, I'll let Mr. Brooks maybe stand up and answer that, but he's been operating since he was a, a young, a young boy out of his garage. He was growing plants. He has plant nurseries all over. He's grown, they grow tomatoes on vines in, in buildings and greenhouses. They, they do a lot of.
So he's done this in other cities in Arizona?
Yeah, lots of other locations, yes, he has.
What's that, Rick?
Lots of other locations throughout Arizona.
So the other, other locations, he knew that it was within the city limits, so he knew he had to get a business license to conform to all the city requirements.
Well, I don't know. I can't speak to those other locations where they are.
Okay, thanks, Rick.
Mr. Miller, so what you're saying is, right now, he's not consistent with, with the current, I don't know, zoning is?
Right now, his land use, his zoning is ag. And ag is not consistent with the general plan, which is industrial slash manufacturing. So his current zoning is not consistent, but it's been zoned ag. It predated the, the land use. All he's asking for tonight is for zoning that is consistent with the adopted general plan.
Okay, I don't have anything. Oh, go ahead, council member.
Rick, good to see you again.
Good seeing you.
Rumors are rumors are rumors. There are some that have infiltrated here from Maricopa County, and I think, I'll just mention one of them, a big odor coming from his type of an operation, smell odor. Any truth to that, or?
You know, I, I think that I would rather have either Neil or his legal counsel address that. There were issues in the West Valley where they were operating. There were some objections to the odor. I can't speak to whether it was coming from their facility or something else in the area. I would probably rather have them address those rumors. Those issues came up at great length at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And actually, Mr. Brooks, as I, as I watched the meeting, it was all about his character and not about the land use. You know, and the, this evening is about whether it's an appropriate land use. It's not a, you know, I don't think there's anything in our zoning code that talks about looking at backgrounds or anything like that.
I'm not, I'm not worried about the character. I'm, I'm just, just.
Yeah, but, but I think that that was a big, that was prevailing conversation at the Planning and Zoning Commission about whether he's trustworthy, a whole lot of other things.
All right. This is a public hearing, so.
Maybe one of the, either Mr. Lasorda or Mr. Brooks may want to speak. I don't know either one of you.
Mayor, we also have a request for three other speakers on this item.
And Mr. Mayor and members of council, Tim Lasorda, on behalf of Growers Market. I did put in a slip, public comment portion.
I think she has that.
Whatever your pleasure is.
Go right ahead, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tim Lasorda here, 2198 East Calmbach Road in Phoenix, and I have represented Growers Market. I want to address that, that comment that was, the question that was just asked. So I was, I've been out to that facility a number, in Levine on Dobbin's Road, and it, you know, when I went out there, one of the first things I noticed is there's a food truck and a little restaurant seating area. I'm like, well, what's this? And, and it's somebody who sells food out of their truck, and they have tables and chairs for the people who come, and apparently they do a robust business. This business of smell out there, I mean, I was out there multiple times myself. It's, that's just an area that, that there are significant odors. It's one of sort of those, those areas of the valley that, that has a certain use that is probably not going to endure for, for that much longer as houses push them out. Kind of like how a lot of the dairies used to be in some of those areas, and they keep being pushed out and out and out. But it's, it was not Mr., it was not Mr. Brooks's property. In fact, if you look on Facebook, you'll see that these same people are still complaining. Well, we got rid of Growers Market. Why does it still? Well, because, because we told you it wasn't Growers Market. It was this thing, it was that thing, it was all these other. One of the things, and frankly, I regret this advice, is, you know, Neil was just gonna basically get out of the area, frankly, because of the harassment. And, you know, he's, he's looking for an exit ramp, and I tell him, Neil, just, just shut up and don't, you know, don't, don't talk about it. Just, you're leaving. There's no sense in trying to defend yourself. And by the way, the, the person who was the primary antagonist, their property was an absolute disgrace, as far as I'm concerned. So I, I think she was the, she was the nuisance in the neighborhood, not Mr. Brooks. But, you know, rumors and things like that get out, but I mean, you know, it's just, that's just the way it is. I think there's a, there's a perception that composting just has a, always has a negative smell. Frankly, I don't think that's true, and I don't think, even if there is a mild odor to it, I, I think it's consistent with what you'll get in those areas anyway from other ag uses, probably less. So I did want to address that specific concern, and I'm happy to answer any other questions that I can.
Are there any questions?
And thank you.
I don't have any. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'm Neil Brooks. I'm the, I actually started my backyard fifty years ago, but just to be real clear on what I did, we've done this in multiple places, and we, I went on January 23rd, we were granted an ADQ permit to compost. So I went to ADQ, submitted a site plan, and told them what we were doing. We've done this in the past in other locations around the state. So we select ag land. I selected this land because it was right by the railroad. It's very noisy there. We also have the, the natural gas station there that hisses all day. We actually had to close for a couple weeks. We couldn't even have people there because they were cleaning it out, and they just told me that, hey, we're going to be doing some stuff. You don't want to have any people around. So we went to the state. We then notified everybody which is required. We went by state law. We also went and got the ag exemption, which was actually just granted on 9/11. So we, we have it for, for 2027. So every requirement that, that we had to do, we did very diligently. When I needed an address to get the business license, I went down, and that's when we found out that we were not in the county, that we were in the city. So that's how long it took. We were issued a cease and desist, which if you ask staff, we've been diligent about. So I've written them letters, probably thirty letters. Before we took any action, we asked permission. We said, hey, we got a bunch of gypsum. We've got all these farmers nearby that want gypsum. Gypsum has about, it's, the gypsum we have is ninety-five percent pure. It comes from the Eloy plant. So instead of going to the landfill, we take it and we screen it to different sizes. Some farmers want it like a real fine dust. We then combine it. Some people are worried about dust, so we use compost with it, and then we can spread it on golf courses. So we do that. We also take it, we've got demand for three, four hundred loads down in southern Arizona. There's three or four loads a day that are needed. So that's our process. Because of the, the cease and desist, we decided that we would basically just clean up the site, get down to about, and our site plan will show this, no more than an acre and a half of composting only for on the site. And we're at close to that point now where we don't have enough material. When you do thirty-six inch boxes, we basically grow a seedling and then put it in a thirty-six inch box. It takes three years. So that's, we only have enough material to do that. So we're going to provide fifteen or twenty jobs. We pay our drivers forty dollars an hour. We pay yard people twenty dollars an hour. We're going to provide a buffer. Basically, we want to put the composting, the site plan will, will show this if we're given the chance to do that. The composting right up against the railroad tracks. We want to completely enclose it, top, bottom, sides. The reason we haven't done anything is we, we're not allowed to. By the, we've communicated with staff, and staff has been terrific to work with. So anything we've done, we've communicated. I made a mistake, and part of it was I was out sick, but that, that's not an excuse, it's an explanation. I'm completely accountable. If I'm doing anything that causes any harm and I know about it, I'll fix it. I know how to fix it. I've done this for fifty years, and I said I started when I was in seventh grade. So we can be a real asset to the community, divert a tremendous amount of, of product that would have gone to the dump. We also have dairies, because there's two products. We have gypsum and we have paper. The paper's needed by the dairies just to suck up all their poop. So we've already figured out the whole system of how we do it. It's kind of a hard thing when you first start because you don't know what your inputs are. The inputs have to be within ten or fifteen miles. And then we have to do the science to figure out how to make a product that's very valuable. And we've done all that. So, I mean, we're, we're, we're here because this is what the process that we were told to take. And, and Rick has been a huge help, and as I said, staff has been, and this is step one. If we need to have fire access, if we need to put in whatever we need to do, we'll do. If we need to drill a well and we, to provide water for the fire department, we'll do that. If we need to dustproof roads, we'll do that. We have a farm in Safford that has big twenty-foot pine trees. The idea is to put them around it so that you, we don't have any impact. And I think we actually create a really good buffer from I-two heavy industrial to one-day residential. But I'd love to answer any questions if there are any. And I've got all the paperwork that we applied, we applied and were granted, the permits, the composting permits, and this goes back to January. We didn't, I didn't have any, anything from the city until I went to the city. There were no complaints. I went to the city and said, I need an address. And that's when we realized that, hey, see, normally on ag land, everywhere else in the state, growing trees, if you're not building a building, you don't do anything until you build the building, build a greenhouse or put, we didn't do any of that. Now, for the composting, we, we've got all the permits that are required by the state. So.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just one last remark, and I'll be brief. It's interesting that the zoning that he has in place today is ag. The ag, as I've mentioned, can have problems with odor, with smells. You can go all over in the nineteen percent of the land around the town and find places that have odors in agricultural districts. The zoning district that he's requesting this evening for your approval does not allow odors, does not allow those things. Light industrial, if there's any odors associated with it, it's not a permitted activity. And the, and the site plan, which he kind of started touching on, really is not an issue, but during the site plan process, they can do, the planning commission can work with them to, to, to regulate the activity on the site to minimize any kind of major concerns that the property owners may have or that anybody. concerns that the property owners may have or that anybody else may have. That, we're just not at that point yet. But it's really important to know that light industrial is not a zoning district that allows odors, public blare, nuisances. That's typically found in a heavy industrial zoning district like you have across the street with the western emulsions and some of the other things where you have a lot of odor. So just, that's just the last little bit I wanted to say. Any, any other questions I can answer for you?
Any questions? No. None here. Mr. Fitzgibbons, I do have a question. Since they've kind of opened the door, I think somebody made mention of being in compliance. I know this is, this is a land use issue, but I'm just curious. We haven't heard anything from our code enforcement guy.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is just a zoning hearing. I mean, code enforcement's a separate thing. So, I mean, I think that's not before you tonight. I don't know of anything active tonight or anything like that, but you're just talking land use.
So, so if the, if the council approved this, then you would be, then it would be appropriate to hear that.
Hear it after you voted on?
I mean, if it was, if this, if this was approved, then it would go back to the P&amp;Z or would it come?
Right, yeah. No, if council approved it, yeah.
And then they, they wouldn't have an opportunity to hear the performance.
Well, they wouldn't deal with, they wouldn't deal with the code enforcement issue. If, if council approved the zoning, then the next step would be to do a site plan. The site plan would go in front of P&amp;Z.
Okay. So if the site plan goes in front of P&amp;Z, wouldn't it be appropriate to find out if, if they've put these restrictions on somebody, if they've had similar restrictions in the past, did that individual or that company comply with those?
You can, you can ask that question, but that's not.
I mean, that's not for here.
Right.
But, but they could there if it went forward.
Right.
Okay.
Right. They could, I mean, I think they could go into those questions. I don't really know the Maricopa, I, I don't know if there were, I think that's a whole different thing. Mr. Lasorda might want to address it, but I don't think that was a zoning.
I don't know that it was or it wasn't. I'm just curious on.
The nuisance statute or something.
You know, someone made mention of it, and I'm curious on how, I mean, they represented that our guys, you know, they'd done everything they've asked of them. And I haven't heard from our guys if they had or they haven't.
If I, if I could interject just real quick, I mean, um.
Hold, hold on for a second. James Jump, did you?
I, I could speak to the code enforcement. Basically, they're here because of the code enforcement. Uh, we put the cease and desist on them. Uh, we allowed them to start removing the materials because that was the nuisance. Uh, like he said, he came in for an address. My, myself was driving out there to see what this, what was going on, and I saw the fire. And then that's how everything started escalating. And then we found, we, you know, we found out what was going on. Uh, we found out that, you know, we had to put the brakes to it to kind of see what was going on and, and then, and we did. So we're here tonight because of that. He's complying with code enforcement. He's complying with the cease and desist by removing, you know, cleaning up the property because it was, it was a lot worse than it is now. And it looked like a landfill to us when we pulled up there and we were like, oh my gosh, what's, what's going on? You know, we, we had no idea. So we found out what's going on. We, we can't, we, you know, had several, like you said, several meetings back and forth. The attorneys are involved. So this is the steps that we've lined out to, to bring him back into compliance. First, the rezoning. Then we go to the, the major site plan review. And that's how we, we hold him, you know, hold him to our code. And along, along the way, we monitor it. And if he doesn't comply with that, we just, we escalate the code enforcement.
Mr. Mayor, maybe another way to answer the question is, we've only issued one cease and desist. We were not asked to issue another one. So we've only issued one. I don't know how long ago that was, in the summer?
It was, it was in April. We sent it last week.
So we never issued a second one at all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, James. Okay, somebody had?
Yeah, if, if I could, just real quick, Mr. Brooks stated that he's been in this business, doing this for like 50 years. And, uh, and from what I was able to find out in going back and looking at public records and everything else, it was a zoning violation in Maricopa County that came up because he didn't have the proper zoning at, on that property for what he was doing, along with the, and then the composting was a whole other thing, I guess. But it just occurs to me, you know, if, if, you know, you've been doing this for 50 years and you just were asked, and you, and the zoning issue came up on, in Maricopa County out in Levine. I think if, if it was me, I'd probably go ahead and, you know, first thing, check, check my zoning before I even purchased the property. So do you, would you like to comment on that?
According to state law, and we got all the permits that were necessary, you're allowed to compost in ag land. Levine was ag land also. The, the reality was that we were too close to neighbors. We had a mechanic that worked for us that was let go for cause. And they started a huge uproar, and I'll, I'll read you stuff from right now, still going on in Levine. And this, we've been gone for six months. And here's, I'll give you, I can just give you a brief, is it me or is the stink back? I'm doing my brakes on my car outside right now and it smells like rotten garbage again. Hopefully it's a fluke. I hate to have this smell again. Okay, this was on Friday, September 26th. We've been gone since March 1st. Then it goes on to say, you know, we think it's Baker Commodities on 35th Avenue and the River, SAP Recycling Plant. It's definitely not just you. The smell was gone, but now it's back. Well, how can we, so we had an unfortunate situation. We chose not to fight it. We left the site. I came down to a rural area with industrial all around it. And we also changed our process just to be absolutely sure. We used to take Brewer's yeast, which makes phenomenal compost. Years ago, I took Ponch, which is when you kill a cow, what's in their guts? The reality is that Levine has changed. I've been in Levine 50 years. 1150 West Baseline had 40 acres of greenhouses. So we, I did not recognize quickly enough that you got to be super careful. Now you've got million-dollar houses a mile away. And as I said, it's proven right now that we weren't what the smell was because they're claiming it's still there. This just came to me from a buddy of mine, and I can, I have all this in writing and I can show it to you. So we came down here, I, I made a deal with, with, with Mr. Freeman and his family. I went to ADQ and I went to the state and I went and we did all the proper notifications. And as I said, when I was gone, we had a fire. We have not had one since. We haven't had any complaints since. We've removed about 75% of the material. So what we're going to do now, realistically understanding, is we're going to have a little tiny operation, an acre to acre and a half, which will be on the site plan, which will feed our tree farm. And that's all we're going to do. We're not gonna, we're not going to do anything that in any way can cause a problem. But that's part of the process and it's part of learning. Every time you compost, you're using different inputs. And, and I can't smell them. I've been in this too long. It's just like a chemical. If I spray a chemical now, we're totally organic. We did that with our tomatoes, too. I get a headache in a minute. So our intention has never been to harm anybody. We want to run a good business, take care of our family. You know, we spent a tremendous amount of money on locating here and, and we, we, when the cease and desist was issued, we've written probably 30 letters to staff and gotten permission for every single thing we've done. So if you want to know about compliance, look at the last five and a half months and ask, ask staff how we've complied. So I, I've done this, as I said many times, never had a problem in ag land at all. And, and as, as Rick very accurately said, ag does allow some smell. Dairies, we're saying now that we're going to more stringent oversight and we'll comply perfectly. If you look at the site in the last five months, it's night and day. In another, probably 120, 130 days, it'll be, the compost will be down to, to an acre, acre and a half. So any, I would love to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? No. Okay. Is that everybody that's?
No. Mayor, we have more speakers. Next is Tom Scott.
Good evening, Mayor Thompson, Vice Mayor Marietta, and City Council members. I am asking you to deny this proposal for the following. To start off, the, the staff didn't provide you with the current pictures. However, they showed some of the current pictures here, but not all of them, so you could get a good idea of what it looked like. In the planning and zoning meeting and in your staff file, the picture that you got was on Google Earth and it was shot in February 2022, reflecting a nice green alfalfa field. After discussion with city staff, the current pictures were provided to planning and zoning hearing on September the 10th. The current condition of the property is an unorganized mess. The applicant is asking for zoning change under the pretense that he will operate a plant nursery. Based upon the current photos, it doesn't appear that intention of the applicant. Let's go back a little bit in the history. The applicant began his operation sometime before in Levine and Maricopa County. The applicant was notified on August the 6th of zoning violation and Maricopa County issued a notice in order to comply with the compliance dated of September 16th, 2024. On September 16th, 2024, the property remained out of compliance and a hearing summons was issued. An administrative hearing was held on November 5th, 2024, and the hearing officer issued a judgment and order that the zoning ordinances were violated. The order was not timely appealed. A cease and desist order was issued on December 13th, 2024. ABC News reported that a composting facility operating on the property is leaving after a cease and desist letter from Maricopa County. And the applicant was quoted as saying that he planned to move to his facility to the Coolidge next year. On December 17th, 2024, Maricopa County filed suit claiming Growers Market violated the cease and desist order issued in November. The above proceedings were a result of numerous complaints from neighbors of the offensive, offensive smells and odor coming from the applicant's property. The City of Coolidge Code Enforcement, upon receiving complaints and investigating, issued a stop work order on April 3rd, 2025, to Growers Market citing the following violations: no city's business license, offensive premises, vacant structures and land, building and land, building without permit, recreational vehicle parking, exterior incineration and storage, emission of particulate matter, and emission of odors. As you can see, this kind, this is kind of a pattern of what we have here in Coolidge currently. The applicant doesn't bother to check and see if the proper zoning is in place. When confronted, his defense is, I didn't know. Yet he maintains that he's operated businesses like this type for approximately 45 years. It doesn't appear to me that the intent is to operate a plant nursery. A composting operation was processing material on the property when the city code enforcers intervened. The applicant's statement in December of 2024, reported by ABC 15 News, was that he planned to move his facility to Coolidge next year. So that kind of speaks volumes on that. Coolidge needs to grow. I agree with that, but we need to be smart how we grow. As a resident of the community, I'm asking you that you deny this request for the rezone change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ronald Jordan.
Mr. Mayor and the council members, I'm Ron Jordan from the city of Randolph. You can't, you can't miss it south of here. We've been out there since 1952. I saw an article, actually it was part of the dispatch for the Coolidge examiner section. And I read that article and of course I saw Gus's name in there. So I called her about this. And right away, as the last gentleman mentioned, I remember the stories on channel ABC, NBC about this company up there in Levine. I've watched it several times. And so that's what got me down here. Because as you know, Randolph over the years, which is county, Coolidge didn't want us, are surrounded by nothing but industrial. That's been going on from way, way back in the 70s and 60s and supervisors and what have you, allowed all these companies to come basically surround us. It was even published in a book, our stories, and not all Okies are what. You may not know. There's chapters in here that point out how the people of Randolph have just been neglected and abused for years. So when I saw this, I said, well, here we go again. And then just like the last gentleman said, just like the reporters reported on television, that the company here, it seems like to me, from what I understood, they get orders not to do certain things or in violations, but they jump up and just do things anyway, just like out here. How in the world can you just come out there and get a land and just start bringing this stuff out and say, we're going to put a nursery? But from what I'm gathering, it's more of a compost thing. Compost, I understand it doesn't really give a lot of odor, but it depends on what you put in there. And Randolph has been poisoned for years with odor, from way back in the proler days when they did all their business at night. All the toxins came out. They'd done it at night purposely because you couldn't see all the, the harmful dust that was in the air. Many people in Randolph died from lung diseases, even our mother. So we were very concerned. That company up and left, now heritage is in there, the same facility. They've just had a 18-wheeler caught on fire and burned down there. You can see it in the back. You've seen other things go on down there. Not only that, we've just been through a whole process with, as Mr. Miller knows, some of you knows, with SRP. We fought SRP for a long time, but eventually how the government works in Arizona, you get the ACC, you get a different group in there that say nay, and then next election, you get another group to say yay, and, and of course, they lost. One thing I can say about SRP, of all the companies came into Randolph, they promised things, they never delivered. But SRP did. I also know that they do give off particulates, but the particulates that they give off is not as bad as western emulsion. Western emulsion, which is directly across the road from where these gentlemen want to put this, this facility. I drove by there. I looked at it and you see all those old tamarack stumps that then hauled in there and blocked it off. And right away, I'm looking at that, I said, oh, go, here we go again. I cannot see them as a nursery. If you wanted to look at a property and build up a nursery, what, a compost, whatever, go down there and buy avocado. They already got a nursery down there, but trees dying and plants all out there. They, they had to sign up there for sale. But anyway, I'm not in favor of this, and I'm just asking the board and what have you to really careful think about this, even though Randolph is not in the city of Coolidge. And we've even asked over the years of Mr. Schultz, I ran across him in the market, I even spoke to Mr. Miller different times, why don't you all help Randolph out? All Randolph has ever done is helped Coolidge. We've sent the best athletes to Coolidge School. We've got many other things, attributes out there, but yet, nobody stand up and help Randolph. All they've ever done is want to degrade Randolph. There's no caring, there's no nothing for the people out there. Please don't allow this, this to happen. This, this, to me, this is, shouldn't even be brought up in here. Think about those people out there. Think about all the people that have died in the past. And here again, who's going to enforce this if this goes, goes through? Just like up there in Levine. There wasn't too much enforcement. Uh, I have family that live up in that area and nearby and all that. This, that was a nightmare. That's why I'm not there today. So I just ask all of you to really careful, think carefully on this and don't allow this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Gussie Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Gussie Taylor. I live at five-two-nine West Verde Lane at Coolidge. On behalf of the community of Randolph, I am requesting that you deny the rezoning of this property. I spent my early days in Randolph. My dad was a deacon at St. Paul Church in Randolph where we attended church services every night of the week. At age eleven, while my parents were in the process of a divorce, I lived with my mother a short time in Randolph. I'm very familiar with all the families and their relatives that lived there. Many of them were members, uh, that attended the St. Paul Church. Past history indicates more than one industry was allowed to operate in an area, causing much harm in health issue to a working class, taxpaying minority culture. Many families moved away even though it was obvious healthy, health issues had already taken place. The industries were allowed to shut down with no accountability. There was no representation nor compensation to the affected families. Even today, generations later, I can see their children and grandchildren that lived during that era continue to suffer with ongoing health issues. And when I heard about the Growers' Market, I, I found this publication earlier in twenty twenty-five. It stated Growers' Market has agreed to close after the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors filed a lawsuit over a foul odor that has plagued a Levine neighborhood. And let, allow me to define plagued. Plagued meaning it caused continual trouble or distress. It afflicts pain and suffering. And it did say, the, the supervisor went on to say, but when their operations start to affect the health and well-being of local residents, we have to get involved and put an end to it. And I, I say, the Randolph community have suffered so much from these industries that have been allowed to come in and operate. And, and I just heard a few months ago about the foul odor coming from that facility even prior to it requesting a permit. And I was thinking, even though the Randolph community was smelling, okay, so the wind shifts and it start blowing north toward Coolidge and you start getting complaints from the, from the, uh, citizens of Coolidge, will you listen to them? Nobody have listened to the community of Randolph in the past, and we don't want it to get to that. Right now, the residents and descendants of Randolph is making every effort to restore and rebuild its community. I say, you may recall, the community of Tulsa, Oklahoma, was destroyed in one act. Randolph has been targeted many times, and now industry is seeking permission once again to come in and afflict the citizens of the community of Randolph. Please allow the residents an opportunity to leave a legacy for their upcoming generation. I'm asking you to make the right decision. Do the right thing for the right people. Randolph are your neighbors. You even share the same zip code, so please give it, have a heart. Thank you. Please deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Gussie.
That's all the speakers I have that have signed up.
Three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I appreciate the Randolph community. I did assist the Randolph community for several months while they were working SRP, and I think that the SRP did a great thing over there in the Randolph community, and they're, they're making some great strides. Um, I think that there's really a serious misconception about what's being requested tonight. Simply a rezoning to allow a, a zoning that's compatible with the general plan. We're not gonna allow, this town and city will not allow odors in this zoning. Odors are allowed in ag, which is what it's zoned right now. There are a lot of uses around the town that have agricultural odors. This client will, uh, comply with the zoning conditions. We are doing exactly what the zoning staff recommended we do to bring this property into compliance. Right now, the zoning that's on the property is not consistent with the general plan. So we're asking for your favorable approval of the zoning request. Let him, uh, have an opportunity to go, uh, talk to the commission about a major site plan. If they want zero composting, which appears to be the biggest concern, he may very well agree to no composting on the property and just do a, uh, a, um, a nursery where they're growing plants to help beautify the world. A lot of our projects around town need plants, and we're gonna be doing a park here pretty soon, hopefully. Need, need plants for parks. Uh, this is not a, a bad activity. Um, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. All right. Seen anybody approach? Gonna move out of the public hearings and move into call of the public. Is there anybody here that wants to address the council? If it's about the same thing, you can just stay there.
Tom Scott, eight oh eight, West Pima, Coolidge. Uh, Mayor Thompson, Vice Mayor Marietta, city council members. I just wanted to give you a report, um, on the National Day of Service project that we had here roughly a month ago out at the Coolidge Cemetery. And in the initial planning, we were planning to have, uh, fifty volunteers, but as it got closer to the events time, we ended up with a hundred and fifty volunteers. And you know, a lot of the city council members and city manager were in attendance among our, Board of Supervisor, uh, VTL was there, but we had a lot of citizens, we had a lot of youth that were there. And, and one thing, we gave them instructions on how to, before they got started to, uh, to clean the headstones, we asked them to say the service member's name out loud and the branch that they served in and what war they served in. And then we also asked them to say thank you for their service before they, they started, uh, cleaning the headstones. So you can just imagine, we had roughly thirty groups of citizens out there and youth. It, it was like a, it was like a choir out there of, of citizens here in our town giving respect to veterans that had paid the price, that served their country. And, and it was a really, uh, you know, it was a big thing. And another thing that was accomplished there was none of the, uh, veterans group knew the location of the veterans that were buried out there where there's no grass. So we were able, our committee was able to catalog, uh, that, that portion of the cemetery, there was roughly two hundred and seventy veterans buried out there. And we were able to put the plot numbers and the locations, and that's been typed up and it'll be, uh, given to the, to the veterans groups here in town. And another thing that was learned is, uh, a lot of the youth that came out there from the high schools really didn't have a very clear understanding. You know, they, they knew that people served in the military but didn't realize what they did. And, and you know, they, they were willing to, to stand up for what's right. And as, as the project came to an end, uh, some of the veterans were there and they were talking to the, the kids from Imagine and from Coolidge High School, and they were like, man, is, is there anything else we can do to help? We really enjoyed coming out here and we hope that you plan this activity every year. And, and that was a good segue in for our veterans group. Now they have access to more volunteers for Veterans Day and Re Surround America and things of the, I think we're gonna be seeing a, a lot of our young people more involved with our veterans group, and I think that was a real plus. But I wanted to, to give you, uh, a report on that. We, we did have a budget and Salt River Project, uh, funded the whole thing for us. They volunteered to do it, and, uh, we, we appreciate their support. We, we appreciate your, uh, support as leaders of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. Anybody else? All right, then we'll move out of, uh, call the public and move into approval of minutes. Discussion in, in action. Item seven, city council regular meeting, September eighth, twenty twenty-five. Item eight, council study session, September eighth, twenty twenty-five. Item nine, city council regular meeting, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would you approve those three meetings, the minutes?
Second? Okay, there was a second, huh? Yeah. Motion, second, all favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, that carries. Moving to items consent. Is there anybody up here that wants any of these items, any of these multiple items pulled, pulled off of here?
Yeah. And Mayor Thompson, I'd like to pull thirteen and fourteen, please.
Thirteen and fourteen. Anybody else? Okay. Here we go. Item ten, consider approval of a street closure request for, from Horizon Storm and Rubble Spots Main Street between Coolidge Avenue and Harding Avenue between four-thirty PM and nine PM to hold a trunk or treat event on Friday, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Item eleven, consider approval to unfreeze the Capitol Improvement Project, the CIP budget, to purchase one bobcat zero-turn riding mower from Bingham Equipment Company in the amount of fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars, twenty-seven cents for the Parks Department. Item twelve, consider approval of adopting the twenty twenty-five Coolidge Short Range Transit Plan developed by Kimberly Horn outlining the next five fiscal years of transit services for the city of Coolidge. Item fifteen, consider approval of the authorization of Services Task Order Number Eight with Kimberly Horn and Associates, Inc., for an amount not to exceed two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and thirty cents for the purpose of design, engineering, and catex category exclusion preparation to facilitate the submission of comprehensive documentation to the city, the Federal Aviation Administration, and the Arizona Department of Transportation for the Airport Taxiway B Project. Item sixteen, consider approval of accepting a Governor's Office of Highway Safety twenty twenty-six DUI enforcement grant, contract number twenty twenty-six four oh five D zero one five, in the amount of seven thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars, awarded to the Coolidge Police Department for DUI enforcement detail overtime and ERE expenses, blood alcohol kits, and miscellaneous supplies to enhance DUI impaired driving enforcement, authorizing the city manager and police chief to execute the GOHS contract. Item seventeen, consider approval of accepting a Governor's Office Highway Grant, twenty twenty-six Selective Traffic Enforcement Program Step Grant, contract number twenty twenty-six PTS zero one seven, in the amount of eight thousand, two hundred dollars, awarded to the Coolidge Police Department to be used to pay overtime and ERE expenses for speed enforcement details, authorizing the city manager and police chief to execute the GOHS contract. Item eighteen, consider award of bid to OCD Automation, Inc., for an amount not to exceed eighty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars for panel, PLC, and HMI upgrades for the lift stations at the wastewater treatment plant, and approve, and approval, I'm sorry, to enter into an agreement between the city of Coolidge and OCD Automation, Inc., and authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary documents. Item nineteen, consider approval entering into an intergovernmental agreement, an IGA, between Pinal County and the city of Coolidge to allow city staff to participate in the commercial driving license testing services provided by Pinal County, authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents. Item twenty, consider approval of entering into a cooperative purchasing agreement between the city of Coolidge and Ellison Mills Construction for on-call maintenance and repair services to overlay Woodruff Road from Curry Road to Signal Peak for an amount not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars, authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary documents. Item twenty-one, consider approval of entering into a settlement agreement and mutual release between Donald Schooner, Schooner and the city of Coolidge as it relates to the settlement of a tax liens for property known as Assessor's Parcel Number two oh five oh five one zero six oh seven, located at two sixty west Coolidge Avenue, Coolidge, Arizona, eight five one two eight. Okay, I think that's it for those.
Mayor Thompson, I'm moving to approve consent agenda items ten through twelve and fifteen through twenty-one as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Thank you. Item thirteen, consider approval of adding I, a IT system analysis position at a range fifty-six within the salary plan and allow IT department to fill said position.
Good evening, Mayor, my Vice Mayor and Council.
Hi. Yes, I, I had saw this and I had a conversation with Mr. Lopez earlier today in regard to it, and it sounds, you know, and, and again, what I, what I asked him about, I said, you know, we have positions that we're now creating, but they weren't budgeted positions. And he said, and what it turns out to me is that it's more like a reclassification of, uh, positions that, that already exist, that are already occupied.
Right.
And so I, I just didn't quite understand the whole idea about creating a new position and then putting somebody in it when it's basically a reclassification and it's leaving the other position vacant. So can you explain the, what the idea was behind that?
Yes, so we currently do not have, um, a IT system analyst position. So to fit the job functions that the employee is currently, um, doing, we had to create the position. So creating the position adds it to the salary plan, and then the request to fill the said position would be to reclassify into the new job title.
Okay, 'cause, and, and again, I mean, I, and I don't have a problem with that. I mean, if we, if we have somebody that's doing the job and we're gonna, and we need to pay them, you know, especially in order to keep them, to keep those good employees, don't have a problem with that. It's just kind of the way this went through and the fact that, you know, uh, every year at budget time, you know, it's, you know, we start out saying, you know, well, we don't have a whole lot of money and, uh, we don't know about raises and everything else. And if we're gonna have, you know, I, I just wanna, I wanna be clear on this stuff when it comes before us, because I, I just didn't quite understand the reasoning behind going ahead and asking us to approve new positions that were never bu- budgeted for in the, in the last budget. So, I mean, if, if that's what we're, this basically reclassification, Mr. Lopez told me that even though we're gonna have these new positions, we're not going to fill the positions that these individu, that these individuals will probably be vacating. Is that correct?
Why, why wouldn't you just reclassify it? It does read like you're creating new positions. Do you want me to say that again? Yeah. Do you want me to repeat that? Why wouldn't we just?
I'm sorry, I didn't know if you were asking or not.
Can, can somebody explain, like, it does read in a funny way, like, why wouldn't we just reclassify a person if they're already in a position and they're doing extra duties? That's usually pretty typical. Why, it does read as if you're creating additional positions or moving people around.
So specifically with the IT position, the next position up from where the employee currently is would be a IT supervisor, and they wouldn't be supervising anybody. It's a two-man department. So we created a position to use, to still portray those job functions that they're doing, but, uh, instead of a supervisor who won't be supervising anybody, um, we created the analyst position.
Okay.
I have a question, 'cause I'm, I'm on the same boat as these two. I, it reads as if we're adding a new position and we're just... as if we're adding a new position, and we're just, when we say we're gonna fill it, we're not gonna publicize it, we're just gonna move our current person into that role. So I feel like reclassifying our current role is really the better, safer route to go. It's how I feel, but, back to the budget, I also feel like if we're gonna approve to bump this person up to a higher range, then I think we should, at the same time, get rid of our current role. So that way we don't have that current role just sitting out there when we know we don't even have the money to pay that role. So it just shouldn't even exist anymore. And that's, that's kind of really how I see it, because if we don't have the money to pay three roles in I T, then why are we gonna have three roles of I T on our budget plan?
Well, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be adding a third position. The, it would still be two F T Es, it's just reclassing one of the current ones into a, an approved position. So the F T E doesn't change. It's not going from two to three, it's staying at two.
So we are eliminating the current role?
Yes. That, that position will not be filled.
Not, not just not be filled, but eliminate it altogether.
Well, it, it won't, it won't be funded. It won't be funded.
Well, and just to add, we, we wanted to make sure that the description met the position, because these, these were, were people that had gone outside their roles, like in, into things that, that normally we couldn't find any place to put them. We couldn't just move them into something. So we had to create something specific. That's why it took us a little longer, as I explained to Councilmember Bagnall, we didn't have it ready in time for the budget. We had to make sure, we looked at other cities, we looked at a lot of different things, and to make sure it was the, the right fit for the two positions we had. Plus, the money that's, that's there now is already budgeted for those. We're not adding another position to that. That's within, uh, the positions that are already there. So we may increase it slightly, which I can do, but it, you know, for the new position, but it's not creating a whole new position in those departments. The other ones won't be funded. See, like, I told Councilmember Bagnall, I'm not gonna go out and fill them right now. You know, there's a lot of things, we talked about, the economy and, and some of the things we talked about during the budget process that we're gonna be looking at as we go forward. And there's other things, we're gonna start the budget process again real quick, and we're gonna be talking about positions, firefighters, all the, all the different things we're gonna do. So that'll come up in that. This one, these were two real specific ones we were trying to, to, to fix, as somebody mentioned. Can you go and fix things that are wrong individually? And that's what we were trying to do. Hope that helps.
Yeah, and, and in the future, if, if we come up with something like this, that, you know, I would appreciate it if, if we had a presentation for council before, you know, and say, you know, this is what we're looking at doing, and, and give us a heads up so we know what's going on and everything, because when I saw it, I looked at it and I just thought, well, we're creating new positions and they weren't even budgeted for, so.
Yeah, and I apologize for that. We'll, we'll do that, go forward.
Yeah, we, I'll make sure the wording of it reflects.
Okay. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Vice Mayor, uh, Murrieta and members of the council, I also like to add, as formerly overseeing personnel, I think what the intention was this time is just to, it says create, but it says to add those items, I mean, those positions, those positions are not in the salary plan. And so I think if you guys remember about a year ago when we started talking, um, I think Fire Chief Dylan brought a position, uh, emergency vehicle mechanic. And that was added like a whole, maybe six months or maybe even a year to, before we started talking budgets. And so I think this is where, um, the H R director is at and where the, the other two departments are coming in. We're creating those two positions, uh, outlining their job descriptions, putting them within the salary plan, and then, um, you know, internally or when budgets come up, budget discussions come up again in January, February, we'll talk about. So what happens is when we don't fill, um, a position that's in the salary plan, we currently put vacant on it. So if they're reclassified, then the two positions that they're moving from, those will now read vacant, but they will not be removed from the salary plan.
Okay, let me try, let me try to understand this. So tonight, we're just approving, adding this new position. Then you guys are gonna go back and do all this, and then you will determine to reclassify our current employees into this new approval.
Correct.
Okay.
I just wanted to add that. That's how, that's the process that we, you know, we try to stay consistent, and I think that's why it's coming to you before, or before you now. So, just to give it a little bit of clarification. Hopefully I didn't make it worse.
Thank you. So with that, if everybody's good with that, then at this moment in time, I'd like to go ahead and approve item thirteen of the consent as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, well, I'm gonna warn you, 'cause you have to be warned. Item fourteen, consider approval of adding a Development Services Manager position at a range sixty-four within the salary plan and allowing the Development Services Department to fill said position. I assume it's pretty much the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and with that, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Is there a sec? Okay. Motion second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He said aye. Post? Okay, that motion carries. And now we will move into regular items. Item twenty-two, Resolution Number Twenty-five dash twenty-two, Resolution of the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Coolidge, Arizona, supporting Lucid Motors' application for Foreign Trade Zone and the F T Z status within Phoenix, Arizona Foreign Trade Zone seventy-five, and authorizing staff to take any further action necessary to include execution of application documents in relation to this F T Z within the Greater Phoenix Area Foreign Trade Zone.
And Mayor, Mayor Vice Mayor, council members, this is, uh, if you recall, when we had Nicola here, we, we did this with the Foreign Trade Zone. It helps them with the duties as they bring things from other countries and, uh, when they assemble things, and then they get to pay the duty once it leaves the site. But it basically creates a zone where it, it's taxed differently and things are placed there while they work on it. We have a representative here from Lucid, Michael Cruz is here, and he can explain that a little better, but, uh, that's basically what we're doing. We're doing the same thing we did in Nicola to help support Lucid and them going into the plant. I know they've been doing a lot of work out there. So we're, this is one of our, our efforts to help them establish a Foreign Trade Zone here, just like Nicola had. They can't just transfer it, have to reapply.
We've already been down the road. What, what some of us have with, we did that with, uh, Nicola?
Yes.
And look what happened to them, Mike. But go ahead and ask for it. But, uh, are you gonna sell any out of, uh?
Good luck to you.
Yeah, no, are you gonna sell any out of Coolidge or no?
Yeah.
Mayor Thompson, Vice Mayor Murrieta, Council, Mike Cruz, head of Public Policy and Government Relations, the opportunity to talk about this. Um, to answer your question immediately, no cars will be sold here. We're a direct-to-consumer sales, uh, organization. So if anyone wanted to buy a car from Coolidge, um, it would be purchased online or anyone of our studios, and the tax implications from that essentially are, um, outlined within the Arizona revised statute as it comes to online purchases and how those revenues are collected. Um, as far as this facility, it's not intended to be utilized for any type of sales transactions or any type of vehicle sales. Uh, this facility is, as you know, a former Nicola Motors facility outfitted for initially Class Eight semi-electric vehicle building and manufacturing. We are not in that industry. We're in consumer passenger vehicles, and we intend to leverage that space that we have acquired as part of the Nicola asset to do two things, which is presented to you all in the agenda, and that's for logistics and operations from that standpoint, but also to, really what we're trying to do here is outfit through various tenant improvements we're working with, the City of Coolidge, James Field have been wonderful working with us and Development Services. Um, anyone we've worked with has really been super helpful in helping this come to fruition. In reality, the other component of that facility is gonna be focused on what we consider P V, which is product validation. This is new vehicle design, new vehicle testing, this is vehicles before they enter the market, is pre-production. So you may have seen in other cities and other places where you might see a vehicle that's wrapped up in silly type of, um, vehicle vinyl wraps, they're testing the vehicles, they're running tests, collecting data, operating, and that's essentially what we wish to do here. I like to phrase it like this, the future of Lucid new vehicles will be born in Coolidge and made in Castagrand. So we are looking to invest approximately fifty million dollars in this facility to outfit it for our use, for product validation, and also upgrading the area for, uh, a wide array of different material flow engineering, logistics, and things of that nature.
That's good news.
It is. Sorry, I can't say that. I'm gonna be selling vehicles out of there.
Well, I mean, you know, you don't have to get them all through the mail. But thanks for letting us, giving us an update.
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions?
How's everything going out there?
Going great. Right now, we're in, uh, what we consider phase three of operations in Castagrand in terms of building, enveloping the facility to bring our mid-sized vehicle to life. Right now, we currently operate and manufacture two vehicles. One is a Lucid Air, which is our flagship luxury electric vehicle sedan, and also our Lucid Gravity, which is a seven-seat S U V fully electric, both being manufactured currently today. If you drive by our facility off of Thornton Road in Petersdown and Castagrand, you'll see a lot of corn shell construct. Really what that is, we are a luxury E V provider. However, we're looking to bring, um, more, um, attainable version to market and for more marketing of a mass sales production vehicle, that it's gonna be just under that fifty thousand dollar price point. So we're looking to expand our market, we're looking to enter a new market in that area, and part of this, uh, acquisition is gonna help us reach those goals, uh, because obviously when you're building different product lines, you're gonna need more parts. You're also gonna need to design vehicles for the future, because our teams are already looking at future ideas and designs and models, because you always have to be ahead of the curve when it comes to vehicle. Uh, so being able to outfit this facility is gonna be critical. The Foreign Trade Zone is another layer to that, and, um, I know one of the questions that was mentioned earlier is talking about tariffs. Th- this is more focused on being able to operate the transaction from beginning to end, because what happens is if you're not operating in a Foreign Trade Zone, anytime you import an item, a duty is assessed. And then a lot of times, people don't realize with vehicles, there's certain components that will come here from, let's say, from a supplier in Mexico. We do one, we add on some component, we value-add to that piece, we send it back, they do another portion of it, and they send it back. What would happen is without this Foreign Trade Zone, we would be taxed multiple occasions. So if it's something we're sending apart here, and we, we fabricate it, we send it back, they paint it, like, put some primer on it, they send it back, we put the final pieces, um, it could be any part like that, but we're trying to reduce the amount of taxation that occurs on it. And it's more for administrative purposes as well when you're working with, uh, advanced manufacturers, because you have a lot of pieces coming in and out back and forth, so.
All right. Anything else? No? Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your support, and if any of you council members that haven't had the opportunity to, uh, participate in a tour, visit the facility in Castagrand, or if you wanna see the final product, once we're done here in Coolidge, we're happy to entertain a tour for you and the staff as well.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it, Mike. Thank you. Go ahead.
Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I make a motion, we approve Resolution twenty-two, twenty-five dash twenty-two as read.
Second?
Yeah, motion and second. Norma?
Vice Mayor Murrieta?
Yes.
Councilmember Shoep?
Yes.
Councilmember Bagnall?
Yes.
Councilmember Saavedra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gillespie?
Yes.
And Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item twenty-three, Resolution Number Twenty-five dash twenty-three, Resolution of the City Council for the City of Coolidge granting a conditional use permit for a wireless communications facility in C three, General Services Zoning District, under the Coolidge Zoning Code, Article fourteen, point A dash G.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, we heard the, uh, the public hearing, and I'm here to answer any further questions, if you have any.
Anybody have any questions for James?
Yep.
Thank you, James. Okay, if there's nothing further, I need a motion to act.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve Resolution Number Twenty-five dash twenty-three.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion second, Norma.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Saavedra?
Yes.
Councilmember Bagnall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shoep?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murrieta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gillespie?
Yes.
And Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item twenty-four.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we table this, uh, as an item, uh, for the next meeting. There's things that I want to get answered myself, and, uh, look into some things, and, uh, if we don't table it tonight, then I abstain from voting.
Is there anybody else that wants to second that? Does everybody feel that way?
I feel the same. Uh, if we can't table it, I abstain as well.
Okay, then, I guess you, you should make a motion to table it, right, Dennis?
Mr. Mayor?
He wants to table it?
Yeah, Councilmember Hudson moved to table.
And Councilmember Gillespie?
Seconded it, right?
Oh, I guess so.
Yeah, so you have a motion.
Okay.
So we need, we need a vote on that motion.
All right. And that, it's not a...
Call for discussion or however you want.
Well, do we need, do we need a discussion? Does anybody wanna?
No, it's something that I need, it's not gonna be discussed tonight, that I, what I need answered. I want to look into some things, I want to investigate some things, and then I want to live advice from somebody else. So I'm making a motion to table it. Gillespie seconded it, so you gotta make a motion, we vote on it, or?
All right, then, I guess, um, I guess we need to vote. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll throw in, if you need more information, I'll go aye, too.
Still, I have to vote individually on those.
So far, I've heard three ayes to table.
Are we voting?
Just to table it.
We're voting to table, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Three ayes to table. Did any of y'all speak?
Everybody else did.
I'm fine with tableing it.
Aye.
You're voting to table?
I'm fine with tableing it.
You're voting to table?
Hmm?
Okay. Five to...
Five to two.
Five and one.
Two against, who's against tableing it?
I'm against table.
You're against tableing it?
No, I'm against it. I'm voting no.
That's what I said, okay. So it's five to two, it's table.
Okay, it's table until next time. All right, then. Reports from, uh, the council. Start down here with Councilmember Bagnall.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Okay.
Nothing.
I have nothing to report.
I don't know, Shoep?
Um, no, I have nothing to report.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I forgot you, yeah, and you got anything to report?
Uh, I just want to thank the Parks Department for, uh, all their effort, and I know it wasn't an easy Coolidge days with all the rain and stuff, but Parks and, you know, Sienna, everybody for, uh, making Coolidge days happen. Thank you.
So there you go. Just thanks to the Parks Department. All right. Gilbert?
Just quickly, I want to echo that. Thank all, everybody that was involved in Calvin Coolidge days. It went really well, considering the rain, and it was perfect. Everything occurred when it needed to occur. Uh, I got a call from Supervisor Rich Vitello that wanted to show up, but he thought it was raining, you know, here, too, and I said, no, it's clear, we're gonna start the parade. He said, oh, man, I'm sorry, tell everybody, I apologize, I wanted to be there. We just, I just wanted to pass that along. Also, the Coolidge Water Festival is Tuesday, October twenty-first, at three fifty-one North Arizona, where the Chamber, Parks Rec, Arizona Water, where they show fourth graders, uh, how to save water, and all that event's gonna be on. It's really nice. And, uh, if you want to volunteer, you can call Arizona Water, they have a training tomorrow, so, so you could present and help with the fourth graders. And then, uh, also, the Coolidge Police Department is, uh, the Gay Night, which is happening at Kenneworth Sports Complex on October twenty-third, from six to eight thirty. It's a really popular event, they have helicopters come in, they have the dogs chase the bad guys around, knock them down. It's pretty cool. So anyway, that's all I have, Mayor.
Uh, I echo what you and Councilmember Gillespie said. Um, thank you to everybody that helped with, um, the recent event that we had in the park. It went over very well, the parade, everything went over very, very well. Everybody did a good job, and we really appreciate it. So thank you very much. And saying that, I need a motion to get out of here.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Or adjourned? Thank you, everybody.